Good morning, everyone. Or good morning, good afternoon, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm not sure if you guys had sent us any material prior to the meeting, or if you wanted to just go into questions.
We sent a few materials to Marcy, questions from the last session, which was COVID funds that were spent, and then also how the Borrow It cut might affect our federal income. But if you have any questions, we're happy to launch right into that, too.
So would you mind giving us an overview of those answers, and then after that, we will proceed with questions?
Absolutely. So let me pull those documents up and just go over it. So for the state library, we received about $2.6 million in COVID relief funds. The bulk of that was funding that went out to the local libraries to help them build up connectivity and hotspots. So we had about $2.6 million of grants that went out for that. The remainder balance, which was about $26,000, were spent on deep cleaning our LP PH facility, and then also storage sheds for quarantining library materials. And that was the bulk of those funds. Jay, am I forgetting anything on that?
I was unmuted, I'm sorry. That's correct.
All right. And then for the other funds, we essentially sent the entire budget for the federal dollars that we received matching funds from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. Dawn, would you mind kind of quickly summarizing how the cuts might impact that budget?
Thank you. And thank you for taking our answers. So the I'm a list, the Library Services and Technology Act is our grants to state program we get from the federal government, and that's about a little over $2 million. We are required to maintain a maintenance of effort from our state funding in order to maintain the federal money. So the state money, it's not the entire state library. It's only activities in the state library budget that pertain directly to library development and services to public libraries, which includes the Connecticut Digital Library, the Borrow It Program, CLC, and the interlibrary loan and some personnel also on the state library side. The cut and $100,000 from the Borrow It funds will have an impact of $97,000 for our federal money, which may not seem like a lot, but it has an incredible impact on our discretionary funding that supports mandated programs for required to provide through our LSTA five-year plan.
And does that conclude the questions that we had had before?
Yes, those were the questions we had from before.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from the committee?
Just, I just.
Absolutely, Rep. McCarty.
Yeah, thank you, Representative Felipe. Deborah, if I could just ask you, when you mentioned the 2.6 million in the COVID funds, so, and thank you for providing that. Did the libraries, did you have a process in place so that the libraries could talk to you about what they needed in those funds, and how did that work, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, we did. And I'm actually going to pass this over to Dawn. This happened before I started, and she was the person who administered those funds on our behalf.
Thank you, Representative McCarty. So the governor's office actually decided which libraries in the state would receive the 2.6 million. It was only 62 libraries, and that was directly related to the Connecticut Education Network buildout of hotspots in certain communities. So all the communications, when we got the list of libraries from the governor's office, as well as the priorities that the governor's office wanted us to to provide for these libraries. We had multiple information sessions, we had drop-in sessions, we had multiple communications to all the libraries that were eligible for this funding. We were constricted in a very tight timeframe, however. We had to expend the funds in the period of three months, and we had, in the time that we were given notice of the libraries that were receiving the funding, we were given 48 hours to give the governor's office a complete list of libraries that agreed to accept the funding.
Thank, thank you for that response. I know it always intrigues me, these timelines, because, you know, sometimes you're rushed and you're, it just, I think it adds to the work, trying to move so quickly and not giving it the attention that you probably would have liked to have had, but that's not your, that's not, was not in your domain. So thank you for all that work. I would just like to comment that I was very impressed at the appropriations public hearing on the presence from the libraries. You must be very well get the message out, because we had really, really ample voices at the hearing. So that was really my only question, and I appreciate your responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCarty. We were very pleased with the response that we've received from the community as well.
Thank you. Rep. Nolan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming before us. I know with a lot of things that many of us have gone on, some of us didn't see any listing in regards to how the funds were divvied up. As far as by community, is there a Excel sheet that shows that, that we can see? And when was the last amount put out for the community libraries?
We do have that spreadsheet available. Jay, do you want to speak to that?
I'm sorry, I was muted again. I have that spreadsheet, and I could work with OFA, and I could have that to you today.
Okay, appreciate it. And now, what was the time period? What was the actual dates where that money was dispersed?
Dawn, do you have that information, the dates that they were given out?
Yes, Representative Nolan, that funding was expended between the period of October 2020 through December of 2020. We had a drop date of December 31st, that we were expected to have all expenditures into the governor's office.
Okay. And if I can ask something else, Mr. Chair. Now, you said the governor chose the libraries that it was going to go to, so that means, and you said there were 62 libraries, if I'm not mistaken, and how many of those 62 libraries did the funding go to?
The funding went to all 62 libraries.
Went to all of them.
Yes.
All right, thank you, and I look forward to the Excel sheet in regards to how it was divvied up. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, I thank you guys for being here. I know that you are, you are one of our easier, you know, organizations to deal with, so I'm glad that we got through this as quickly as we did, and I look forward to our future conversations.
Thank you. Representative Nolan, we, Dawn also put together a report that talked about how the libraries chose to spend those dollars. So we'll include that in the information that we send along as well.
Thank you. That'd be great. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Here.
Um, are we a little too early, Ally?
Yes, the folks from SDE are not in the waiting room yet.
Well, when they get, when they get there, you can, Representative, I think we can begin as soon as they get there. I think we have everyone, we have everyone here. Look like we have everyone here. Once they get there, we can get, we should begin.
I agree.
Sorry for being a little late, but I didn't have any questions for the libraries.
Sure, coming up, we're going to have a lot of questions for our folks at SDE.
Ally, are SDE here? Is SDE here?
They are not in the waiting room yet.
Oh, okay. Just thought we'd get a running start. You can mute yourself, Doug. Oh, now you're muted.
I made it to Friday, let me be nice. 3:30, 3:30 yet? No.
No.
Harvard's playing at 3:30. Championship.
Who's playing?
University of Harvard.
Oh.
They made the dance for the first time ever.
Oh, wow. What time, they're playing at 3:30?
3:30, yeah. It starts at 3:30.
CBS?
You know, they got about four channels going on here. I don't know which one they're going to be on. I doubt, ooh, it would be dancing to CBS. Let's see, yeah. Establishing the steps. Tony. Tony.
Yep.
You see what it says, the caps on these formulars?
On the, on the formulars, you can access, access and all that?
Yeah, I'm looking at it, it says caps on adult education, health, welfare. That's a quote.
That, yeah.
What's the importance of having these caps and not having these caps?
What's the importance of having these caps and not having these caps?
Yes. Why do we have caps on these, and why, yeah?
Probably to contain the spending. That's probably what it is. But who's on here that's from education? Who's on?
Any OFA people here?
Yeah, let's see, who's on? Should? I don't see any OFA people.
Really? So is Senator Austin on here?
Yeah, she's on here.
Kathy. I need to understand these, this, this cap issue.
Um, huh. Where's the OFA?
Mike should be able to talk and explain this to us. When we're grasses. Cap for fiscal year '09 were lifted, and resulted in higher grant payments, some of the stuff. There she is.
Who? I don't see, I still don't see the OFA.
Some folks from SDE are in the waiting room, and I'm going to be letting them in now, if everyone's ready.
Okay, yep.
All right.
Where's, where's OFA?
I'm not sure. Somebody from OFA was on with the library.
Yeah, I saw. But I don't see anybody from OFA on here. I just, I just sent Neil a text. Huh. Okay. Doug, we'll, we'll, we'll get your answer. Mr. Chair, go right ahead. Is, is there, is the commissioner off? No.
No, I was giving her a second.
Yeah, yeah, I don't see her.
You should be right on.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're early.
I would argue that's a great place to be.
Right?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Yes.
Charlene.
Desi is logging on now, and then we should be all set.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. This is Charlene.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Dr. Charlene Tucker. How are you? This is the last meeting between me and the weekend. I'm going to get my questions in very early. Are you, are you, is your team with you?
We should be here. Let's see, I see Desi, I know Laura's here, and I see Kathy and Jessa. Yep, the team's here. And Jeff, maybe your superintendent from the technical high school, they're all, they're here.
Okay, great. Um, my colleague, Representative Felipe, I wasn't here for your, for the beginning of the state library, so I'm going to ask that we, I don't know if you want to make a presentation, Dr. Tucker, or you just want to go right into questions?
We can go right into questions. You should all have the documents in front of you with a table of contents all labeled that we can work through. So tell me what works best. We can just take your questions, unless you want me to walk through each document one by one, but you can tell me what works for you.
How many documents do you have?
We have 19 documents, based on the questions that were asked.
That's way too many documents to walk through. So what I'm going to do, we're going to open it up to questions, and then we can move forward from there.
Okay.
And if someone had a specific question before, I encourage them to ask that question, and you can provide that necessary response. Or did you already provide responses for individual legislators prior to the meeting?
Laura, I don't think we did individual. I think we packaged everything here based on the questions that were asked. Is that correct?
So at the last meeting, I took notes, there were 19 deliverables that I counted. And so the table of contents lists all 19 things that we were asked to bring to this working group session, and the files are all labeled accordingly with the corresponding number to what document goes to answer which question.
But they were not emailed, they were not emailed to our legislators?
They were emailed today to Sue Keane and Sarah in OFA.
Yep.
Okay, so let's go right into questions, because I'm not, I'm not a lot, you know. I have some questions first, but, and I'm a nice guy sometimes. So Representative Felipe, I'll let you ask a few questions first, and then I'll go right. So how about that? And then we'll open up to the committee.
Well, I was actually going to say that I'll give, give the committee and yourself a little time to ask your questions. I have way too many. I hope that you guys can narrow them down for me.
That's good. Then you should go at the end. No, but honestly, because some of your questions might get answered in the meantime. That's, that's the only reason I said it. But anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll start. Commissioner, I have a question in regards to, I heard you said the superintendent from the tech school right here. And I saw one of your policies that you were looking to modify the graduation requirements for the tech schools in regards to world language. And I'm also looking at the budget sheets that you are looking to actually reduce funding for those positions. Can you explain to me the rationale behind first modifying the graduation requirements, and also on the funds to not fill those positions for the tech schools?
All right, so this is specifically around word languages, and I'm going to have superintendent jump in, because we delayed that based on not having the appropriate staffing. So I'll have Jeff to turn his camera on, so he can explain to us what happened in terms of getting the appropriate staffing available for word languages. Jeff?
Okay.
Sure. So as you know, the graduation requirement in the state of Connecticut for all high schools requires one credit of world language. And, you know, 99% of high schools across the state already had world languages, Spanish, French, Russian, you know, whatever it is. Technical high schools never had those types of departments in our schools, and it was not part of our graduation requirement. So this was something that was brand new for us. So it would require us to hire about 30-something teachers to the tune of a little over $3 million to meet that graduation requirement. So it's going to take us a couple of years to build up that capacity throughout the state and our schools. So it would probably be very helpful for us to delay that requirement at the technical schools for a little bit of time at least.
So are you saying you weren't, your students were not required to take world language when we changed the graduation requirements a few years ago?
Prior to that, no, we did not have that as a graduation requirement at the technical high school. So we didn't have that type of staffing in our buildings.
Oh, okay. But, but now as we move forward, you're going to, it's going to be a part of your graduation requirements. Is that correct?
We certainly could, and we're, we've already started to put forward positions to, you know, to be hired in that direction. But, you know, it is going to take us a while to build up that capacity, because it's, that's a shortage area to hire. And, and quite frankly, we're not going to be able to hire people at like first step in those areas. In order to be able to get people to come teach in those areas for us, almost certainly, we're going to be hiring people at top step. So it is going to be a higher cost than normal.
Okay, so I'll, I'll refer by other questions to the commissioner, because that's more of a policy decisions, but I'm, I'm kind of amazed that your students do not have to have a language requirement to graduate in Connecticut, where all the other students and the public schools do. Thank you, though. Thank you for the information that explains that. My other question I have is regards to the expanding, I think you have Booker T. Washington School. Is that, that's for grade growth? Is that correct, Commissioner?
Sure. So Desi oversees that. So Desi, is that what we're needing for Booker T. Washington?
Yeah, Kathy can confirm for me, but Booker T. Washington is still rolling out the grades that were in their approved charter. I do not believe that they are at their approved charter in terms of the grades that they, they will be allowed to have. And so yes, Senator, that is correct. Kathy, is that, I see you shaking your head to confirm. So yes, Senator.
Okay. So my other question would be in regards to the proposed new open choice programs for the two communities of Danbury and Norwalk. Can you talk to me about how you came to your numbers for the first year or second year? And the reason why I ask, I think these numbers are extremely too low. We have a history with open choice programs in Harvard, as you guys know. And I don't think those programs are funded appropriately. And yet, we're looking to expand that, and I just want to know where you came up with those, that, that, that dollar figure for that, for the open choice program.
So Kathy's unmuted. Yeah, go ahead.
Took me a second to unmute it. So Senator McCrory, that, good afternoon. That is actually in your package that we sent over, that is one of the worksheets. It's, I think it's number nine in the package.
Number eight.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, number eight.
Number eight. So for fiscal '22, we did not anticipate any students actually beginning this coming fall. So for fiscal '22, that we have provided $200,000 in funding for professional development and community engagement. So essentially, to get the surrounding communities better informed about the program, do any needed, even PD and stuff to prepare the staff in the buildings for accepting students through the program. And then there's a $75,000 fee for the RESC to offset some of their administrative expenses associated with essentially operationalizing the program. In the second year of fiscal '23, there's continued $100,000 for, towards that professional development and community engagement. Some of that can be used as support services, as you know, Senator, for the families to help make that transition for their child go well. There's also $75,000 for the RESC administrative expenses. And then in terms of students actually going, the anticipated number is 100 students would go approximately 50 from Danbury and 50 from Norwalk. the anticipated number is a hundred students would go approximately fifty from Danbury and fifty from Norwalk. That could vary. I mean, depending upon, you know, how many of the surrounding districts actually make seats available? How many families are comfortable in that first year, um, you know, sending their students out of district for uh, the choice program? So um, we provided a slight bump in the per pupil to incentive, making it four thousand dollars per pupil versus um, three thousand, which is the, is usually the entry tier um, to try and attract districts to um, participate. But that is what, uh, so about four hundred thousand dollars is committed towards the um, per pupil operating grant. Just, and it will subsidize about a hundred students. And then there is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars dedicated to transportation, which um, is a per pupil grant of thirty-two fifty per student.
Okay. Um, thank you. I would just um, suggest, recommend that much more resources be put in for the preliminary year, for academic, for um, in uh, outreach, uh, professional development. You, you're gonna need a lot more of that for a new program like that in, in those communities. You're gonna, I, I think you need a lot more resources in there. As a matter of fact, I think you need a lot more resources in the current program also. Um, I just have one more question, cause I know everyone, you know, wanna get their questions in. I like the fact that we're doing grade growth um, for Booker T. Washington. And I also like the fact that we're increasing um, the but formation, foundational base for the charter schools from eleven to five, going up. My question is um, our goal in education is to get great outcomes. And I'm just a little concerned that we have some other schools that are doing very well and they're not reflected in growth, grade growth in their schools, and these schools are doing very well. And I will encourage us to go back and review these numbers and how, cause I'm very frustrated honestly, as a legislator, as an educator, as a black male in this state, that we have successful charter schools that are doing very well, that we're getting unusual, extremely high outcomes, but yet we don't support them. We don't support them and I'm very tired that they have to come up here every year and plead with us for out, for money. And I want to make sure that successful, successful schools, successful schools, that we hold them accountable. Yes, we do that. But when they are accountable and making the great gains that they are getting, they are properly funded. So I would recommend that you guys go back and find a way to identify those schools. And I think we know who they are and put the resources in place so they can continue to prove others wrong and educate our children. Okay, um, so I have no more questions at this point. I'm gonna ask my co-chair if he has any questions. We can move forward um, for, from there. Thank you.
Uh, as I said, I, I think I'm gonna wait until the end, but I know we have Senator Austin on deck. So Senator Austin.
Then Austin. She said her mic wasn't working. I think, I think it was wrong. I talked with Senator Austin just a minute ago. There was something wrong with her mic. So we might wanna go to the next, next person and then come back to Senator Austin.
Okay. Uh, Rep Curry was next. I know he had his hand up and, and then it came down when he came off. So Rep Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a quick question. Nice to see you, Commissioner and staff. Um, you sent out the Excel spreadsheet as a follow-up to the question asked around your FTEs. Um, and you know, I, I personally think it's atrocious to see that your position decreased uh, the way that it has. Um, your position, your vacancies, your percentage has gone up, even though the numbers stayed the same. Can you just elaborate a little on, you know, what, cause where, where are you with filling the vacant positions? Do you not have the money authorized to do so? So just a little bit more uh, conversation around that spreadsheet.
Sure. Uh, and I'll tee up Kathy as well, but uh, a part of this representative is looking at what our needs are uh, within the agency and being able to work with OPM for uh, what we're looking for right now as well. As you're acutely aware of the resources that's coming in and the additional requirements for us to administer our, our programs. We're also kind of stepping back to see what our needs are uh, going forward. So we've looked at what we have here and sitting in this role now, uh, taking a look at across the agency, basically to see where our needs are uh, and the areas that need shoring up. And so that's where we are at this point in time.
Do you have any, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna ask Kathy. I know she's run the numbers for us uh, and has looked at our uh, agency numbers over the years. And I know that we've, we've gone down uh, clearly. Uh, and just wondered if there was anything else she wanted to add. She's historically been looking at these numbers for us.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Representative Curry, for the question. Um, as uh, the Commissioner said, we are like every state agency, frankly, at the moment, taking a look at our staffing, um, anticipating what we might be seeing for retirements and, you know, doing some succession planning. Uh, so we are right now coming up with a plan for what to do to allocate uh, funds to fill those positions that are currently vacant um, with an eye towards meeting the changing needs that we're seeing in the department in light of the, what's going on with COVID. And we will be able to use some of the administrative resources in COVID to help us with some capacity stuff while we do our planning. So I think that's the good thing is, is that um, it will give us a little bit of relief while we figure out who's still going to be with us and how we're going to have ourselves organized for uh, the coming years.
Thank you for that. Is there any sort of guesstimate on when you think uh, the assessment that you're doing on your, your needs level will be completed?
We're in the throes of doing that right now, uh, Representative. So I'd say within a week or so, we'll have a better idea. Uh, especially looking at the newest round of funds uh, that's, that's coming our way and what's required in it.
And so, um, so the funds that were, the COVID funds that we're receiving, you're gonna be using that to hire folks, is what you're saying?
So we're, we're looking at, it does allow some set aside for administrative purposes that we can use. Of course, being sensitive, those are uh, you know, not permanently there. Uh, so we'd have to be thoughtful about what that looks like for us within the next two years. Uh, but it certainly gives us an opportunity to take a look at what are the large projects that we need to work on? And what are those things that we can have additional staff support that go the length of that grant to, to help to, to provide capacity? And it gives us some planning time as well uh, as we look, as we look ahead.
Well, I have, I have no doubt that even if we were to hire additional people with the COVID funds, that you would be able to justify to uh, many of us that those positions should likely be kept beyond that period of time uh, to better support everything that I know we charge you to do in addition to all of the other requirements that you have on your, on your plates. So uh, thank you for your responses and I look forward to uh, seeing the outcome of your assessment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. I think we have the next hand up is Representative Nolan. Representative Nolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I just wanted to just get a little brief uh, uh, understanding of the SR funds uh, again, uh, if you don't mind. Um, the timeline uh, in which they have to use a fund, is there a certain amount that they have to spend per year? Um, or is there or is it at their free will to spend the money uh, accordingly?
So the timeline, I'm trying to pull up my timeline document here. The specific federal required timeline for the funding, it's not necessarily how much is spent per year, and I'll have our CFO confirm that. It is what's spent over the, the course of the grant. And there is a lot of uh, with, with uh, requirement for reporting. Uh, I think maybe quarterly, Kathy, if I'm not mistaken, to the federal government and all the expenditures that are occurring with the grant. So in one of our documents, and one of my colleagues will tell me, which we have the timelines uh, outlined for you there uh, for each of the, the resources that, that we have for the SR.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't get with all the other meetings we had, I didn't get a chance to read up all the documents that you guys sent. So that's why I was asking about the timeline.
Sure.
And the uh, also the needs assessment uh, in regards to uh, reporting back uh, in regards to uh, the, the funding, of course.
Right. So I would say, Representative, so uh, in one of the documents, the, the SR one funds must be expended by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The uh, SR two must be expended by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, I believe the newest funds, Kathy, will be twenty twenty-four uh, if I'm not mistaken on that one. And the coronavirus relief funds must be expended by December uh, of, of this year, twenty twenty-one. And in the documents already we've sent you, I think someone had asked us to provide the funds that's been expended to date. And that is in one of our documents as well. And I think it's by districts, if I'm not mistaken, Kathy, right, by district. So you see what they received, what they expended and what's left uh, to be drawn down from us. Now, the fact that it's not drawn down doesn't necessarily mean they've not committed that uh, to programming, but they've not yet drawn down uh, from us.
Document seven has the deadlines for the federal funds.
Are you saying document, what number?
Document seven.
Seven, okay.
And documents one and two are the um, district runs for the coronavirus relief funds and for SR one. So you can see um, what's been spent to date.
Cat, I'm sorry. Cat, in those, that email, we're, we're gonna receive that information, that document.
Yes, and should have, Sue Keane should have all of the documents.
Okay. Alright, no problem.
Yeah, I got, I got the, um, I got the documents. I just didn't get a chance to read them, cause of all the other things we have going on. And uh, one more question if I can. As far as transportation for uh, schools, um, what monies came in directly for transportation? Or was there anything that came in for transportation since a lot of our busing, it seems like they're trying to spread the kids out on the bus a little bit more. And um, I didn't know if, if, if there was an increase that they needed to uh, bring it, bring, we needed to bring attention to in regards to doing that.
So Representative, it is one of the allowable use of funds. So if districts wanted to do more distancing, whether in building or through transportation, that was an allowable use of the funds, of the SR funds.
Same funds, okay.
Yes.
Alright, I have other questions, but I'll let others ask and then I'll um, catch up.
Sure. I wasn't sure if Kathy, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if Kathy wanted to jump in on the transportation piece. Thought you started to say something. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's alright, Commissioner. I was just gonna say, Representative Nolan, um, it was also an eligible use under the coronavirus relief funds. Um, so basically districts were able to use them not only for um, cleaning related to the buses, but also for adding to the routes um, in order to provide social distancing. There was a wide variety of things, but it was pretty flexible, both pools of funding.
Oh, thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that.
Oh, are you done, Representative Nolan?
Yeah, I'll come back later, a little later and ask more.
Thank you. I see Representative Walker has her hand up. Representative Walker?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and um, thank you, Commissioner, for um, for coming on today. Um, question number one. How are the, 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 the open choice seats that are going to be for Danbury and for Nor, Norwich? How are they, Norwalk, how are they going to be able to maintain that, that needed after-school programming when these kids are gonna be bused in? And I believe it's gonna be some long-distance busing.
Representative, a great question. Uh, I wonder, um, Kathy, if we can look back to some of our experiences in current programming. I know that there are times when folks have to plan for transportation, right? And in, for, for students to be able to stay and participate uh, in after-school kinds of activities. Uh, and so though, really, we'll make, we'll need to have that kind of planning. So the students really don't feel isolated uh, and can really be integrated into the programming. And though, that's always a concern, and I know that's always something our open, our office works on uh, with districts. Uh, and the same is true for how do you integrate families uh, into a new, which is why the, the funding here is to provide some of that upfront work to make sure that families have some levels of comfort, right? You, you send in your little ones into a new place and in some cases, a place you don't have immediate access to. And those are always concerns in working with families for uh, for this programming.
Well, I, 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 I understand, you know, the, the issue is that they're overcrowded in Danbury and, and everything. But the importance of kids being able to be close to home and, and families to be, I mean, most of their families are gonna be working multiple, they're working multiple jobs as it is. And you know, it, it, it really, it really puts a child um, on defensive, I think, in, in a lot of ways. And, and I, I think this is the wrong way to, to address the overcrowding, in, in my opinion. Um, so. Okay, so Stanford School for Excellence, um, where is the grade growth in that, in that program? And how many seats are there?
So Commissioner, if you'd like, I can uh,
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so uh, good afternoon, Representative Walker. Um, Stanford Charter School for Excellence uh, did request an expansion of their program to include middle school grades. Um, they came before the state board uh, in the summer. And um, they were looking to add grades six through eight. Uh, the department did submit as part of its budget, um, a request for funding for that expansion to take place. I believe that in light of, you know, trying to um, increase the funds, the baseline grant for all of the schools for um, in order to assist with their financial viability. Um, and then the need for adding the additional grade in Booker T. Washington to meet their current um, enrollment under their charter. That um, there just was not funds uh, available to provide the additional growth for the Stanford Charter School for Excellence. So those grades are, the, the additional grades are not included in this budget.
For, for Stanford School?
Correct.
It's, it, 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 it's staggering to me because one, they're doing such a good job. The families and the parents testified um, time after time after time about this. We're not, it seems like we're penalizing a school for being the top in the state. And it, it's like, this, this is a dream for us to be able to have us in the inner-city school with these types of grades, ratings. And yet we're not giving them the ability to grow. It's almost like we don't want these kids to grow. So I know I'm talking to the wrong people. I, 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 I got that. But it just, it, it just, it baffles me. It's like, when, what, when, what do we need to do to say that that school is good? And, and what test do we have to acquire and things like that? So I really um, I'm baffled on that. Um, I, I did not hear, and I'm sorry, cause I was going to, between, between two Zooms. Did the technical high school question get answered about how um, how are we going to make sure that the students can graduate?
Are, are you referring to the uh, word languages, Representative?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes. So the uh, superintendent who is still on mentioned the kind of the ramping up, the, the scaling up to be able to get the world language teachers uh, in the, in the system and in the pipeline so that they can start offering those uh, courses.
So there won't be a problem with the graduation for this year, for those students that, that they will acquire that grade? I mean, that, that credit in world, world geography or world languages? Yes?
This year's senior class doesn't require the uh, the graduation requirement. It's next year's senior class is the first graduating class, I believe, that uh, requires the one credit. So we would have to uh, get them uh, the credit for next year's graduating class.
Okay, okay, okay. So this year is not a problem. But the budget doesn't reflect the need for, for next year. Correct?
Correct. That, that would have Correct. That that would have to, that's something that would have to be budgeted for to hire the thirty teachers.
And that's a two point four million?
Little over three. I think it's three point two million.
Three point two million, okay. All right, and that's, that's, okay, and and that's how many teachers?
So it would be fourteen in the first round and then seventeen, so a little over thirty. I think it's like thirty-two teachers we would need. We would wanna have two world language teachers in each of the schools. That should be able to minimally let us be able to offer the the one credit to every student.
Okay. I I I'll come back. Oh, I have another question. Somebody who can't get on their microphone, okay. How much, how much does the charter school in Stanford require for funding for sixth and seventh grade and preschool?
Kathy, do you have that available? You're muted.
Representative Walker, if you give me a minute, I will get you that number.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Kathy. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will probably come back with another question at the end. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I I also wanted to follow up on that question, your line of questioning also. But I'll wait till she come back with her response. Representative Abicardi, you're next.
Thank you, Master, uh, Master Chair. Master, sir. Sorry about that. I know, your ego's big enough. You don't need me calling you master, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioner, and to your staff. Thank you so much for being here. Two, two quick questions. In the, in the S R dollars, I know that, I think I heard that one percent of that has to be used for enrichment and after-school programs. Does that include transportation? Can they use it towards transportation?
So the S R dollars, the newer ones, so let's say, S R one did not have the same levels of carve-out in it as we do the one that we're getting now. But that is certainly an allowable expense that they could have used. The same is true for S R two, that they could have used that as well. The uses were kind of broad. When you think about, you know, learning, learning recovery, learning acceleration, summer enrichment, summer school are all, are all eligible uses for the funds.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about the special ed kids and doing some enrichment programs for them this summer, considering most districts, including mine. Our district, Meriden, has been in full-time since September, but we have not been able to include all of our special needs kids because of the mask issue. So we're working with the district to look at some enrichment programs this summer to help support these kids, which their transportation is a little different than the general population. So I wanna make sure that we include that in there. And then my second question is, for the family resource centers, how were they able to access some of these dollars? Because they've been doing a lot of work with O E C, Office of Early Childhood, in the parent engagement. So where do the, some of these dollars fall for them? Can they apply for a grant? You know, not all F R Cs are in school districts, I mean, are in schools, right? Some are independent buildings. So what, how, what's the process for them to access some of these dollars?
So thank you, and a great question. We're working very closely with Commissioner Bye that we can look at how we can braid even some of our funding that's available. Summer enrichment and summer opportunities, number one on the list. And so we are looking to, it could be grants made available, but we're really taking a look at family resource centers, frankly, even libraries and museums that may be able to plan really robust pro-enrichment programming over the summer across our spaces of O E C and S D E. So we're in the process, you might have seen, we launched yesterday an Accelerate C T Task Force to be looking at, and enrichment is one of the subgroups that we're working with, so that we can get the best thinking across all these sectors to say, how do we do this? And do it quickly, because we certainly have to set it up. So we know some of our districts are already working with community partners to think about what they can do from their set of funds. But we're also looking to see how we can leverage the state set aside funds to do that kind of work as well. And for the American Recovery Funding that we're getting, there is a set aside there that's specifically for enrichment.
So I, so I would, I would love for you to keep them on the forefront of this. I think that they've worked really hard through this pandemic. They've been in full-time since the beginning. So I think it's, it's really important that we keep them whole. I will say that I am disappointed with the cut in their budget. You know, we've cut them year after year. We finally got them to not everything that they want, but at least a fair balance. And with this cut, you know, I think it's, I think it's gonna be more harmful than anybody is really realizing. So I just have to, for the record, say I'm disappointed in that. Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Master Chair, should I say.
That, any, well, it don't matter what you call me, it's what I answer to. Thank you, Representative. I think we'll go with Representative McCarty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and welcome, Commissioner, and your staff today. And thank you for the veritable dissertation. I am inundated with paperwork here, so trying to go through it all. If I may, just pose a couple of quick questions. So you outlined very clearly all the various uses you can have of the S R funds. And I do understand that there will be quite a few new dollars coming in as well. So we'll probably be questioning those dollars afterwards. But for now, on some of the priority that you have mentioned, there is a specific area where you can use for curriculum development statewide. And I know during our hearings and we we've charged the department with development of new curriculum, especially I'm thinking of the new model curriculum. And in the discussion, we realized that there would be need for additional funding. Is there a way that your department can tap into some of these funding for that model curriculum or not? That would be number one.
Yes, Representative, and we didn't inundate you too much, hopefully, with paper. We were responding to our questions that were asked of us. But absolutely, it is what we're looking at right now, the newest round of funding. We don't have all the information yet about usages. But absolutely, I know across S R one and two, that curriculum is one of the eligible uses for those funds. So we're looking at that as well as we're doing an overall scan of all the the new work to be done. And how can those funds be leveraged there as well?
Okay, well, that that's excellent news, I think. So thank you for that, Commissioner. And then if I may just ask, so I, and I went through, the attendance reports look good. So I was pleased to see that that the attendance is very good. But can you tell me why we're losing so many in the adult ed education breakdown? It looks like so from, maybe it was a cursory look at the report, but doesn't seem like we have quite as many individuals going into the adult ed programs. Do you have a comment on that?
Just to the point of so many things that are competing for for time for for our adults into programs. And so I don't have, you know, exact information to share on that, Representative. And we can see if we can get at some of that at the program level to find out what folks are seeing at the local level for programming. But it is important for us to continue to take a look at that as well.
Right. Yeah, that was a concern. And then just if I can go back to, aside from all of our new funding on the budget itself for the department, can you just explain what the Durational Project Manager is going to do? That was in the Governor's Bill, and I'm just curious as to what that function will be.
Kathy, do you have that? I don't have that information.
If you give me a minute, I will find that in, I can answer, though, at the moment. The charter school question as to the additional funding that would be necessary to expand the grades at the Stanford Charter School for Excellence. And that is a million two hundred and sixty thousand in fiscal twenty-two. And it's annualized to a million eight hundred and ninety thousand in fiscal twenty-three. And I will, I believe that the Durational Person is related to the Governor's Workforce Bill, but let me confirm that for you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wondered what what the job description would be for that, that project manager. And then just, I I did catch my attention on all the vacancies. And just as more of a comment, I would hope that we could try to work with the Talent Department. I noticed there were quite a few vacancies there, just so we can accomplish so many of these objectives that we have. And then just finally, on the breakdown, and I know I don't wanna make this more work, so just at some other point. Because we realize this pandemic put such a stresser, and I know it's a high priority for everyone to look at the mental health needs and services throughout our district statewide. So at some point, I'd be curious, because you did break down the runs and what each district would be receiving, but it doesn't go into, I I'm curious to, or hopefully, that a lot of these funds will be used for some of the mental health and well-being of our students and looking at some intervention and restorative practices. So just at some point, maybe we could have a sense of what percentage throughout the state or our districts tapping into those funds for those type of services. That would be very much appreciated by me. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to Kathy for all this great work. It's gonna keep us busy.
Thank you. I believe we have, I think Representative Felipe, you wanted to go last. I think Representative Walker is the last person before you. But I'm gonna step in right before Representative Walker and ask Kathy. Kathy, you said your number, one quick question in regards to your chart, to expanding Charter School for Excellence. Stanford Charter School for Excellence is one point two and one point eight. But I'm noticing that you're reducing funding for Charter School overall by four point six, one year, four point six next year. Is it safe to say that the dollars are available because of the the reduction in enrollment in other charter schools to pay, to make sure the funding for Stanford Charter School for Excellence is there?
Yes, you could consider doing a reallocation
Okay.
of funds.
Great, thank you. All right. Representative, Representative Walker?
Thank, thank you, Master Chair.
Thank you, Master. I'm all for you. Did I hit my, did I hit my?
Yes, I did, yes, I did, yes, I did. Okay. How do endowed academies, which are actually the regional high schools, for eight, for eight schools at N F A and six schools at Woodstock, how are they, how are they funded?
So you were, you were breaking up a little bit, Representative Walker. I heard endowed academies, I heard that.
Endowed academies, the regional high schools for eight schools at N F, N F A and six schools at Woodstock. How are they funded?
Commissioner, if you don't, Representative Walker, would you mind if I asked a follow-up question? How are they funded through the new federal S R funding, or how are they funded in general?
How are they funded in the new S R funding?
Okay. So under S R one, the endowed academies would have been eligible for equitable services. They are considered as, given their construct and statute, which we are looking at. They are considered to be non-public schools normal, so they're not eligible directly for Title One funding. So under S R one, they were eligible to receive equitable services from the districts that send the children, send them students. Under S R two, there wasn't a provision for equitable services. There was instead this separate pool of funding, fifteen point seven million dollars that was made available for the non-public schools. We have over three hundred entities that are eligible to apply for those funds. So given the number of students that are served, pub, regular traditional public school students that are served by our endowed academies, we made the decision to withhold, to set aside some money under our state set aside in S R two in order to provide funding to the endowed academies. They were notified this week of the funding amounts that they were going to receive. It was based on their enrollment. There was a weighting factor for the number of students that they serve that are eligible for free and reduced-price lunch. We can send you the exact amounts that each of the three schools will will get, if that would be helpful.
Okay, well, well, the Norwich Free Academy has got fifty percent free and reduced lunch. So I would, I would expect that they would qualify under the 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 guidelines. So whatever we have to do to to make sure, because we can't isolate and and ignore the fact that that the poverty is there, and that's the whole point of providing it. So whatever we have to do, I I would really appreciate the focus on that. That's that's really important. And I guess that that, to lead to that also, under U S D one and U S D two, how did we do, they they got S R, both of them got S R funds?
So they both have some population of students who are Title One eligible. So they receive a small amount of funding. They also were eligible, both of them, for as being part of a state agency for coronavirus relief funds, which every state agency had made available to them. I have been working with Unified School District One and, which is Corrections, to see if there is any way that we can help assist with some of their additional needs, which is something that we haven't completely sorted it out. But we are working together to try and see if there's, because only a portion of their students are would be considered part of the K twelve system. And so the thing that
If they're doing, if they're doing G E D, isn't that part of the K twelve system?
So that would be part of adult education and so, which I don't, I'm not the expert on whether that falls under the purview of K twelve. But that is, because they do do G E D, we are looking to connect them with our adult ed office and some of our inner C T E folks to see if there's some federal funding that might be available to them because of that population, like them serving that population.
But G, G E D is high school completion. And when you get a G E D, it says you completed your high school diploma requirements. I know that because I see them all the time. So I somehow think that we're splitting hairs in this. And I think they, all people, again, need to get those, those, especially the remote learning would help tremendously in making it a little bit more equitable in the way they're being educated. So again, I would hope that that would be something that we would, we would all work towards. My last, my last question is, I mean, you may have it in the packet, so I don't know, because I haven't gone through it. But I asked for the the breakout of the magnet school seat reduction. Is that in the packet that you sent us?
Yes, that is in the packet. What you will see in the packet is it will show you the enrollment caps in the magnet schools. So in other words, the amount we budgeted for eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, and then for the biennium. And it also shows the actual enrollment for both nineteen, twenty, and this year, twenty, twenty-one. So that you can see that we held the schools harmless to their nineteen, October nineteenth, the nineteen, twenty school year enrollment when we were doing the caps for the biennium. So even if they had a drop in enrollment, which some of our districts had some pretty significant drops in enrollment, they were held harmless to their prior year's enrollment when we were budgeting for the biennium.
But with that formula, won't next year's be dramatically reduced? Because the COVID year is is in this, this budget year, wouldn't it?
But we didn't, I see what you're saying, Representative Walker, but we didn't use that as the baseline. In recognition of the fact that COVID has created this, um, very difficult situation, we used the October of nineteen numbers as the baseline for the biennium.
Okay, that helps me. Thank, uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Senator, uh, I just wanted to quickly, I'm sorry, uh, they just wanted Rep, uh, Representative to know that in the package, the funding for the endowed academies are listed there for you. It was number five. So we shared with you the weighted calculation and what they were able to get. As, as Kathy said, from the set aside, from the state set aside, we took resources there so we could support them. Uh, and also for non-publics support Kathy mentioned for S R two, there was fifteen million that we received for a special grant for them. I think the same, I think it's the same amount Kathy is true for the newest, uh, round of funds that's coming as well. So they will still be kept as a separate grant, uh, that, and not get equitable services in this, this final round.
Thank you.
As well.
Um, I see that, uh, Representative Felipe, you're the last person standing before this meeting is over. But so I'm going to get a question in, uh, in regards to, uh, the transportation. I think we have a bill to separate out the, uh, chef transportation dollars from the overall grant. But I would like to see it go a little further and separate out not just from the chef magnet school transportation out, but all chefs differentiate between, um, in that grant, transportation and academics. Um, is, I will, is that something we, Bill, we have to pass or is that something you guys can do on your own?
So right now, uh, Senator, we could actually tell you, um, we could provide you the breakdown between what we're spending in the choice programming on transportation and what we're spending, um, on the academic piece.
No, 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 not the choice program for the mag, the magnet school. I think this is a magnet school, not just a choice.
So for all, I'm sorry, I was, when I was saying choice, I meant all. So for magnet schools, open choice, um, right now, we can break down, uh, we do track the difference between the grant amount that we pay out for transportation versus the grant amount we pay out for, um, the academic piece. The reason that we specifically separated out the, um, chef transportation is really about a long-term, um, planning for funding, since the state fully supports that. And so we thought it would be helpful, um, for both the administration and the legislature to, um, have a more transparent view of what it is that we're spending on the regional transportation system versus what it is we're spending on the actual costs, uh, that go towards educating the students.
So again, that's, that's a great deal. You're doing it for the Pratt region. I, I don't see why you do it for the rest of the other regions.
We could, but I mean, we would, um, we, I imagine we could set up a, um, separate, uh, SID and account for, uh, transportation. I'm not sure if that would require legislation, but we can check into that and let you know.
Yes, please. Cause I do, I want to differentiate what we don't spend on transportation and what we actually spend on classroom work. Um, so, and I have no more questions at this point. I will again, Patrick, I am, uh, encouraged that we're, we can use S R money to fund our model curriculum. That's a great, and I also think we need to use that to do, um, put more resources in professional development around a black, black and Latino, um, curriculum. But I think we need more resources, uh, for professional development for that curriculum. Uh, Representative, Representative, uh, Felipe, take us home.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to make two comments. Uh, first, I want to talk about, uh, Stanford Excellence. I think my, my colleagues made, made great arguments and, and I want to just say that we talk a lot about facing cliffs financially, uh, when we talk about this budget. Um, but we don't talk about the cliff that these children are facing, going from a school that achieves the way the Stanford Excellence achieves, back to a neighborhood school that does not quite reach that level of achievement. Um, and I, I would feel very terrible if we were to put them in that situation. I think that we should do the best that we can to make sure that Stanford Excellence gets the support they deserve, that those students continue to get the excellent education that they've been afforded at that school. And I would encourage, uh, the rest of the, the rest of the subcommittee to, uh, look into those four point six million dollars and see what, what of that we can spend to make sure that they get their sixth grade, their seventh grade and their preschool, so that those children can continue to be educated and children from preschool on can have that environment of excellence, uh, going forward. I also just want to second my co-chair's notion that we need to make sure that we're separating transportation funds from the magnet school allocation. I think it's important to know what's educating children and what's just getting them to and from. So I want to support that. On adult education, I have a question. Um, I, I, from looking at the numbers, I can make an inference that there's probably an, uh, a A D, a lack of access for some of our adults. Um, because of the pandemic, because of some folks, uh, who are lower income, who may not have internet, who may not have the devices and may not have the opportunity to partake in some of these programs. So I was wondering if we could get from you guys a breakdown, uh, per municipality of where enrollment was in, in past years and where it is now, just to, to make inferences from that as to what those, uh, barriers to access may be. I think that's, that's one important thing, and I was hoping that we could get that information from you guys.
Certainly, Representative Will, I get that information and I also, I know Laura turned her camera on because she wanted to add to that, uh, information about adult ed. I'm also pleased to share, and we can get you that information, that we were able to use some coronavirus relief funds. I think that was the pot Kathy that we used, that after we provided devices and connectivity, uh, to our K-12, that we also turned to the adult ed programs and we were able to provide funding to support devices there as well. So I appreciate you pulling, uh, highlighting the fact that that's also, uh, that was also an issue. I'm not sure we've closed, you know, the, the divide there, but it was good to be able to provide some supports there as well. We have the list that we can share with you so you can see what those numbers are, uh, as well. Laura?
Yes, so I, I'm actually happy to report that the primary reason that we've seen a drop in the numbers is we raised the age, um, for dropping out of high school from sixteen to seventeen a number of years ago. And I believe there's also a proposal this year to raise it from seventeen to eighteen. So what we're actually seeing is a lot more kids graduating high school, and that's why there's lessening in the program.
Like to hear that. Um, and another question is, um, about the S R funding. And I've asked this question before, um, is it explicit that the funds must be expended? Or is it that they need to be allocated? And I've talked about it before. Let's say that you have, uh, a school that is trying to do one-to-one, uh, devices with their students and they also are, are having a contract out for a few years for maintenance of those devices, for insurance, what have you. Um, if that, if that contract was to go past the dates in which those S R funds expire, would, would that be something that they would be able to do since they already allocated those funds? Or does, do they have to explicitly be expended by that date?
Uh, so Representative, um, they have to be expended by the date. So all of the federal pots of money that we've received to date, um, have an end date that's, uh, within the federal, within the, um, the CARES Act. They also have an extension for the time of expending them of another year. That's through a federal law called the Tidings Amendment. Um, so but once they hit that extra year, so let's say if, um, for S R one, the timeline would have been that they had to expend all the funds by, um, nine thirty, twenty, twenty-two. So with the Tidings Amendment, that would allow them to carry those funds through nine thirty, twenty, twenty-three. So they have that extra year, but at the end of that extra year, that nine thirty, um, they pretty much within, uh, sixty to ninety days of that have to close out and actually pay for, um, drawdown on the funds and expend them.
I appreciate that answer. Um, no more questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, young man. Uh, let me go back to my participants, see if I have any more here. Oh, I do have more hands up. Representative Abercrombie, followed by Representative Nolan.
Thank you, Master Chair. Just a quick follow-up, um, Commissioner. So when we were talking about the adult ed, right? And I understand what you're saying with raise the age is what I'm going to call it. Is there an opportunity for us to expand on the program that we've had in place that does remedial classes for kids that are going into community college? So that they don't have to use their dollars at the community college level? You know that there's, I think we're only down to two, um, districts that are using, that were part of that pilot, pilot. Originally it was Manchester, Meriden and New Haven, and I think it's only New Haven and Meriden that are still doing that. Can we, is that an opportunity at this point, since the numbers are down?
Great question, Representative, and I, I remember those pilots well when we were putting them together. I, it is worth certainly going back to take a look to see what did we learn, uh, from those pilots that will help us, uh, to think a little bit more creatively about that. So, uh, I, I would certainly take a look at that.
And it might help with our budget also, because if we're looking at dollars to do free community college, you know, this also will support that by taking those dollars off of the state's back, um, you know, going forward. Um, and it's, it's money well spent in my opinion. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, Master Chair, get it right.
Master, Master Chair, absolutely, sir.
I'm just messing with you. Okay, I see some people have woke, woken up. Representative Nolan, you're up, followed by Representative Walker, and then followed by Representative Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, Commissioner, I, I'm not sure, um, if I got the email from you or, or, uh, if, if it were, there was a continuation of discussion. Um, I, I brought up, uh, requirements, uh, for graduation and, and as far as the literacy for, for, uh, math, um, uh, and, and in our major subjects. And I was just wondering about the requirement for, um, students to have at least eighth grade, uh, level literacy. The, um, when they graduate, of course, I would like it to be more than that, but, um, I, I'm just as a minimum of eighth grade, uh, literacy level for our major, uh, subjects. And I was wondering if there was any follow-up on that.
Right. Uh, so Laura, who is on here, uh, will certainly make sure, I haven't forgotten your ask, that I really wanted to connect you with some folks, uh, here, uh, to have that very specific conversation, Representative, and we'll make sure we follow up, uh, so that that would take place.
All right, and, um, is there, um, is there any level of requirement right now that I, that we don't know of?
So I see there's a Chinese-
We can, yeah, we can check that, uh, Rep Nolan, and get back to you.
Okay, um, and I'll tell you why, because I'm, I, I'm hoping to, uh, sooner than later get, find, uh, some wording for legislations to make that, you know, something that should be required. Because I think we do our students, uh, uh, a, a bad service when we don't at least make sure that they can have a eighth grade level or above by the time they graduate. So I really think that we should concentrate on, uh, making that mandatory, because it just does no service for them once they get out in the world and they're unable to, uh, uh, read, write, or have, uh, that, that math that is necessary for what we, uh, expect for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I promise it'll be two seconds. First, on the adult ed, I just want to say probably the, the, the reduction in attendance is directly related to jobs. Um, most of the people, if they don't have any jobs, they don't, a lot of them need the jobs to also be able to come to school. And so that, that's really, we've noticed that, um, a lot of the people that nor, normally would be coming to adult ed are not coming because they can't find, they couldn't find employment. Hopefully, as employment picks up, you're going to see the employment, um, the, the attendance numbers improve in the, um, in the schools. Then my last question, and I promise it is, on the, um, on the various accounts to achieve savings, there is a personnel line there that has, that's for five hundred and fifty-two thousand. That's one, one part. And then the other part for the transfer of their human resources and labor relations function to, um, O P M, um, or to D A S and O P M. All fourteen of those people were people that were, um, were your human resource department. Is that correct?
So Kathy is on, but I know we had the H R centralization, uh, and so folks were moved, uh, directly to a D A S. And that's probably been represented in the budget. Am I correct in that, Kathy?
Um, it is. It actually is a, a combination of actual, um, filled positions and, uh, vacant positions that were assigned to the H R function in the agency.
And then the, and the, the personnel for reducing various accounts to five hundred and fifty-two and five hundred and sixty-nine?
Um, so we had requested as part of our budget, uh, funding in anticipation of making payouts for retirements. Um, and, you know, given the, the timeline of the change in the pension benefit being July one, twenty, twenty-two. And so, um, I, that item can be, um, dealt with centrally. You like through the Office of Policy and Management, um, they have that reserve for sal, the salary reserve for, I always forget, I can't get it right.
The reserves, the reserve for salary account, yeah.
Yes, so they may be able going to, uh, they, they, I, um, are most likely going to handle it that way. We had budgeted for it just in anticipation, um, of the, that we know that we have a sizable number of staff with many accumulated years of service, um, leaving over the next eighteen months.
It just, I, I, I just want to say this on the record, um, the agency that I think should have the least, um, positions traded out is your agency. I think you guys are, are understaffed dramatically, and I think it hinders us in getting, um, a lot of the information we need and hinders the, the, the LEAs from actually getting what they need in support. So I think it's really, we, not a good thing for all these people to be shipped out of S D E. If anything, these numbers should be shipped into S D E so that we have a much more vibrant staffing at S D E. But that's just my opinion, and I thought I'd say that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Walker. Representative Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Commissioner, thank you for joining us today, and I have a couple of quick questions and maybe a comment. Uh, so Waterbury is opening up a dual-language, uh, school for the, uh, upcoming year. Uh, that's the plans. Uh, my, my question to you is, is there any special funding for that dual-language? Is there any incentive from the state to do that? And how is being funded, number one? Number two, how do you, uh, are, are S R O, are S R Os part of education funding? Are they part of municipalities and towns? And how do you feel about S R Os?
So thank you, Representative. Uh, starting with the last question first. So the S R Os are municipal-funded. I, some of them are funded directly by school districts. Some of them are funded, uh, by, by the municipality. And as you recall, there is a bill, uh, that is asking us to study, uh, the role and responsibilities of the S R Os, which I think is really important that we get their voices, uh, to know their role and also, uh, talk to students, uh, around their experiences and the communities in which they serve. So I think that is really important for us to learn, uh, to get a comprehensive picture of their role. Uh, this, this proposed bill is about training, what training is, is needed, uh, for S R Os. I know that there, I think the bill also speaks to training in trauma, mental health, uh, and, and equity, uh, which is really important as well. So I, we look forward to, uh, being able to execute that if passed with the requisite support, to be able to have the time to do that really, uh, comprehensive review of the role of S R Os in our schools.
Thank you, Commissioner. And as far as dual-language schools are concerned?
Oh, so we need to, I'm not thinking about, and that we have any dedicated funding, Kathy, unless I'm mistaken here about that.
No, I, not unless it was, um, actually an inter-district, um, magnet school program. Would there be, uh, specific funding available for the program? There's an, otherwise there's no dedicated funds for dual-language programs. There's an, otherwise, there's no dedicated funds for dual-language programs.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I want to thank you guys who come in. Oh, I have one last question on at the last public hearing, we had some, an employee uh from Regional School District number one, and they were question, asking about upgrading some equipment or, or supplies um in one of the facilities. I believe it was a women's facility. Um, and I, my question was, I, I, I was, I was sure, do we fund, well, I guess we do fund um uh of the Regional School District number one, how would they, how would he go about getting the sup- the supplies, I think actually was some tools or something to them. I mean, it, it could be something in the ma- machines or something to, to upgrade, so he can continue doing the work that he's doing in, in, in the school. Uh, because I was confused. I didn't know whether it came from corrections or does those type of supports come from S D E? Do, are you, are you familiar with, can you respond to that real quickly before, before the weekend?
Uh, sure. Commissioner, would you like me to take us out? Senator, um, both USD one and two are s- part of state agencies. So they should be budgeted for um within the budgets of in corrections. That should be part of the Department of Corrections' budget request to support um the activities of the district. Do they receive additional subsidies from like federal and education? Yes. But the main part of their budgeting is within um either the Department of Corrections or Children and Families.
Okay, good. That's, that's what I needed to know. I kind of thought that was it was. Okay. Well, again, thanks again, guys. Thanks for coming, supporting, answering all the questions from my colleagues. I think you guys did a great job. I definitely be in contact with you as we continue to move legislation forward. Thanks again.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Master Chair.
There you go.